I call the meeting of Deerfield Elementary School Committee to order at 5:02 PM. Meeting is being recorded. The first order for this tonight is of appointments. Pointing Secretary first and as an author to the general rule, so thank you. Pointing Curtis, which will secretary. And we also need a CES representative and we do have to vote. Choose one tonight. Anyone interested? I can do it.
I think my evening availability is like a little bit shoddy at the moment. So I'm gonna depend on, yeah, so much more people have that regularly.
I can do it. Okay, so point itself, CES. Now we're missing a few minutes from June 6, 2003. There's still two. Second. All be aware. Your free. Jelly, financial statements.
Hi, good to see you all again.
Oh, we should have started off with the welcome back, everyone.
Welcome, Trevor.
Thank you.
All right, so sixty-one warrants were signed in late June, July, and August, and then the early part of September. That's a significant amount, but as a reminder, it pays some of twenty-three warrants as we close out the year and then started fiscal year twenty-four. So the total warrants signed were four hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars and three cents. I sent you out the general fund and school choice expense reports. I'm happy to take questions on them, although it is early in the year to even sort of dive into some of the overages or savings on accounts because we're still trying to work out all the camps with salary and wage placement. But I will note, teacher salaries are going to be over budget because of various personnel changes that took place since the budget was approved. I think we're gonna have money to cover that because at a minimum, the nurse leader position is no longer full-time. That's a staff and physician, so that's a significant reduction there. So there's not gonna be an issue with the budget. I also expect that the budget's gonna be much tighter this year than it has in prior years because Deerfield has traditionally, for at least the last three years, had two to three. I think last year they had four people on leave of absence, four teachers. This year we only have one, and we have replaced that position, so there is a substitute in that role. So we won't have the savings that we typically have in salaries and wage line, so things are gonna be a little bit tighter. The other line that I wanted to comment on already, and this seems to come up the last few years over and over again, is that our meetings budget is almost fifty percent spent already, and it's only September fourteenth. Nine thousand of, actually, I think we've spent around eleven thousand. And about nine of that was to repair the air handler units, so not mini splits, not the heat pumps, but the actual large units that are in the administrative offices. Those needed significant repairs over the summer. The heat and AC was not working there originally for the building, as far as I understand, so, you know, thirty-year-old systems, and we just had to spend the money there. And then there's been some other miscellaneous things here and there, nothing else extraordinary. The walk-in did have another significant repair. If you remember, we talked about the walk-in last fall as well, that maybe that's something we need to eventually get on a capital list. There was several freon leaks, and that had to be taken care of, but we paid for it from school lunch revolving, so it didn't affect budget, but it was about a five thousand dollar expense, so again, just something to note. Otherwise, I don't have anything further unless you have specific questions. Trevor, I can send you the report.
That'd be great.
So do that, and then.
Was the walk-in, I thought it was on to be replaced, or is it in old Frontier we were looking at?
So Frontier is being replaced.
Yeah.
We talked about it here last year, and we're told that the walk-in itself is good, but the refrigeration unit just might need, whatever's on the top of it, I think, might need to be. Yeah, exactly.
All right.
So we'll, we have a capital meeting on the twentieth with Bill, and these will be the kind of things that we're talking about of, you know, what were our emergency unforeseen repairs? And do we need to put something on the list as a major problem?
Okay.
Yeah, and it could just be that it's still early, and we don't know, but I know that we have talked about how early childhood sort of budget is sort of continues to track to the end of the fall, and I was just looking at what's listed here.
So revenue is significantly higher than we expected, so that's promising news. We did overspend last year, so last year, I think, we started the year with about sixty-five or seventy thousand, and this year we're only starting with fifty, so we did use up some of our reserves. The good news is that the projected revenue should cover the projected expenses as they stand right now, and it's anticipated that we'll have almost the same amount, about fifty thousand left at the end of the year. So as long as we continue on that track, we'll be in good shape. I think Kim, who's in the director position for early childhood, is doing a good job of accommodating families and fitting schedules in, and there were some changes, right, with after-school, I think.
Well, they know Friday, it's, there's an option to stay until three, there's, yeah, so I know that there's also a potential, and I don't know how that factors in, that people can stay till three or five-thirty.
Some of it goes to aftercare if they stay till five-thirty and not for early childhood.
But that looks like it's better news.
Yes, much better.
It can still fluctuate as year goes on, if someone goes to leave, and I can go up, we have to take them, is not just.
Yep.
How much, how much capacity do you know?
They have two full classrooms.
They do?
Yeah, they're both full. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. I don't know, the needs of the classroom as well. The other comment I'll make about the revolving funds, so their school choice balance, you can see there for the projected expenses for this year. First of all, I'll say revenue is down. We brought in about three hundred and forty thousand last year. Tina and I have looked at the end-of-year list. We have, I wanna say, nine outgoing sixth graders that are no longer here, they moved down to seventh grade, and we only took in three new choice students. So we're gonna be down revenue, but this is conversation that we had last year. This was part of the decision of consolidating classrooms. We knew that there was gonna be a potential impact, and that is coming to fruition. So while the school choice balance right now is really healthy, we're going to have to pay attention to that in the future. But what I will say about the expenses at three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, which is more than our revenue, it includes currently fifty-two thousand for the air conditioning project that we're gonna see about forty-five thousand back in rebate. So that expense will actually come down, I've just accounted for it.
Is it fifty-two total, not forty-five?
Yeah, we won't get dollar-for-dollar back, but we'll get close. I think we were able to do eleven rooms between what the town covered on warrant, what we're covering through this, and then the rebate, I think in the end, we'll end up only paying for three of the eleven. The town paid for a good chunk of it, but the school will end up paying for three of them.
That's great.
I think that's all I have, unless you have something more I'm gonna talk about. School lunch, I know Darius is gonna talk about this, or at least it's in a superintendent report. In case anyone doesn't know, it's universally free, not just for this year, but that's permanent in the law now, so they would have to pass to change the law in the future. So again, we have healthy balances there. If things stay on as projected, we will bring in enough to cover expenses. And we're looking at, you know, what other types of things can we work on improving through quality-wise, food service-wise, district-wide, having those conversations, and equipment repairs. We've done quite a bit in this building in the last few years between grants and town funds, but there's always more we can do because a lot of the equipment and materials are different. I feel like right now we're in good shape. We'll see what happens come budget building season, but right now we're looking good.
All right, principals' report. It is out here.
She's gonna, you know, so she probably started off with that Tina had a last minute, she had it. Oh, with her personal issue, so she said she was gonna send the report to you folks. If you didn't get it yet, we'll be getting it, probably all this game's starting.
Sophia, a couple comments. There's no one in the room. Is there anyone online who wanted to comment? Or Blake, I guess, no? Okay, moving on, unfinished business, capital update?
Yeah, so the capital update, I will run you through this summer pictures here. Thanks, our summer project, you know, and I put them all in ones, just so you can see how busy we're doing. So I'll fly through the ones that aren't ours, but just so you have an idea of all the things that are happening in the district. First, you've got new boilers installed. New tennis courts, they should be done by next Saturday. They painted the bottom part of the gym. That's what the boys' locker room looks like. It's good now, I mean, it looks good in this picture, it does not look good now, but we redid the floor. The construction of this was actually finished this week, I could run through the picture of it, but they put a new top on the
Looks really nice.
On the top of that, the floor was giving out, the thing had been leaking for years.
Yeah.
Then here we are, Deerfield. So we, as you saw, we moved all the bushes, the town helped us out with that, they pulled the bushes out, and then we contracted with Snow's to do plantings and move the grass up to the building, which is nice. Here's the action from the preschool room, but in the back you can see they installed the mini splits. We have a new dishwasher, which isn't good, but it does not load itself, nor does mine at home, I keep telling my kids that. We just refinished the floor, that wasn't really redone, just refinished. Had a new shed up front. Very nice, very pretty. And then in Sunderland, I'll go through the other details when I put, the smaller stuff we did in the building here, but they put AC in just the library, they had some floor entry problems where we had to redo the floor entrances. They're in the middle of a bid for an oil tank replacement, which is a big project for them. They had their phone system replaced. They painted the whole interior of their school, scabbos. Waitley put new bathroom floors in from the old tile floors, while the old tile was more expensive to put in originally, it's very hard to clean. They put new sidewalks where they got a grant, saved roots to schools grant. Their tree got struck by lightning during the summer, and we'll be paying eight thousand dollars to remove them, but we're working a town to get that number down. They painted their library, got new tables for the cafeteria, and painted their cafeteria. Conway put a new generator in, which with all the problems they're having up in Conway, it's probably a good idea. They ACed two more rooms, they have two rooms left, and so their building is completely AC. They got a new range for the kitchen, which has been an absolute nightmare for us, there's a lot of problems with it. They got a new stage curtain, they went to the town for funding on. They got new flooring, much like we've been doing in this building, they've been rotating and doing the same idea. They finally got the office done with carpet, and you can see the flooring here. And they got a pest-free storage container. We also got one at Frontier, just to do some additional storage needs. It was not a pretty picture, but it's a lot better looking with these new partitions. And as you can see, we're probably gonna be dealing with those floors in the near future, because those are tough and tough to clean. And that is it in pictures, so stop sharing there. And then some of the smaller stuff at Deerfield was that we did have to pay, I don't remember if we talked about this in June, but for the AC units, we did have to run new electricity lines through, which was in, which was around, and you don't know, you give me a, am I going up or down fifteen, twenty?
It was almost forty thousand for the electric.
For both, for both, it was each, okay, so for each wing, so forty thousand just to run the AC because the electric panel in this building is not, it was not built to hold that, so we had to put in sub panels in the wings in order to run the AC.
And what they did will have capacity to do the rest of the buildings. We had budget savings from the salary position that was not held.
Right, so.
The big investment.
Yeah, so it was either, right, so we said we were gonna put AC, we could have used just the AC warrant and not put an AC, just an electrical part to prep it, but we said we had any savings, and we did. And then we did wood chips out in playground up front, that's a five thousand dollar thing, the reason I'm saying, it's five thousand dollars annually, because we're gonna be talking about improving that area in our conversation later this night. I believe that is all we had for, besides the wonderful cleaning and prepping.
And I think they had some mirror stone in the building, I haven't been in the building, but I think they had some of the walls.
How it tells you the hallway you're going down, the three-four hallway, the one-two hallway.
So that is the capital update, and obviously, we're gonna start, we need to get the capital plan for next year, so we'll be doing that over the next two months, and we're bringing it to you.
Yeah, the painting on the, when you're coming into the building that says you are loved, and the grade levels that were painted.
Yes.
Lot of updates here and president.
Yeah, it's very busy, a lot of them. And some of them are multi, when you're bidding and doing all that, and you know, your small ones and very large ones. But it's also good to see the cross the district that we're getting.
Yeah.
I mean, all the committees are working hard to get these things kind of through, to find the money, get the warrants passed, and so forth. And next year's gonna be busy for us too, as we'll get into some of those projects to meet.
So I guess the front and two projects, I think?
There you go, let's jump straight in. So very excitingly, we did get the MVP grant to improve the front walkway of the building, and we talked about that. And so we are now at the point where I had a meeting with, I want to do a special thank you to Chris Curtis, who put together the grant, and he's kind of been helping me get this situated and working with engineering company because we have the funding source of the eighty-five thousand dollars for the warrant, and then we have a funding source that's coming from this grant. And the grant itself is looking, is going to pay in total one hundred and fifty-two thousand to work on the green, the gardens and such, and the drainage. So now we're at the point where we had a couple meetings in the last two weeks, and I need to get a pricing on what it's going to cost to put the either asphalt or concrete in the front. We did a general, how much would it cost on the cheap? Eighty-five thousand dollars, if you want to start doing stamped, concrete is going to probably be much more than, and so probably closer to one fifty. So I'm going high there on the estimate, but we're trying to get those estimates, both in concrete and in asphalt. And the difference, and we'll talk about the difference between the two when I have a little bit more than just the basics, but you know, concrete is the stronger setup, although if you put salt on it, you're gonna have issues there. Also, they're about the same in price for material, except the concrete needs rebar and metals through the roof. So that's what we'll, we'll kind of do a thing, but we want to do some sort of design that's in the original plans for that, and that wasn't part of the MVP grant request. So you, there is rain gardens and water mitigation strategies and, and such there. So we're trying, now we have to take the two projects and put them together, and that's what we're in the process of doing. And really try to get out to bid for next summer. So I will probably back, be back, because I don't think eighty-five thousand dollars is gonna cover what we want to do, and we're probably gonna have to make some decisions on what the design, we, how much, where we're gonna go with the design. Design right now, if you can think back, had a, I put it up, it'll probably take me five minutes to figure out if I get it up. It had kind of like a sunshine, like a ray of light coming from the door, a pathway with stamping concrete. You know, if we have to reduce that back, you know, I want to do something nice and that kind of thing. We also have to look at the original design that the architects created within the MVP grant, just had the front, not the walkway all the way. Where we just put in the new plantings and such.
Right.
So we want to be able to do that whole walkway, and that might increase it. So maybe we just do plain asphalt up too, and then we do a design as we come in. So that's what we're gonna have to work with the engineers on, as soon as I have to come up with a general hard cap number, because that was not part of the original engineering, so. And yes, and according to the, with the grant, I pledged that we would spend thirty thousand dollars to match, because if you don't do a matching, they probably wouldn't get it. So of that, thank you, Shelley, appreciate you jumping in sooner. You know, of that one fifty-two, thirty thousand's coming from us, so we only got, you know, basically one, one twenty.
So whether we use school choice funds to pay for that, or we use rural aid, because our rural aid numbers are projected to be, so it won't have to come from budget.
So, yeah, questions on that? So we're still kind of putting the project together to bring back to you in October, it will be a, I guess, hopefully a more full project at that point in the sense of, well, no, with the engineering and how we're gonna take with the town warrant, put it into the other project. There's a lot of discussion on how they have to separate it, because it's a grant, you gotta show the spending on it. Probably should have Shelley in that original meeting, Shelley thinks it's pretty easy, based on some of the other grants we've worked on. Other folks on the call thought it was gonna be more difficult to put the two together. She doesn't think so, so she'll be in the next meeting.
I don't think the account, town accountant will think so either, it's just a matter of, so we'll work it out.
Yeah.
I just was, one of my questions, like what gets voted on? So it's, even though it's grant money, we, it will sort of like, it will come up as a line item, so we can vote on it, or we'll.
Town approved it last spring, so we covered that.
So the eighty-five thousand, the town agreed in last spring's warrant. And so, and just take a step back, those listening, maybe they don't remember. So what happened was, we have to fix that front, and so to be told, I didn't think we'd get the MVP grant. So I said we have to move forward with at least being able to repave the front entrance, and maybe we'll try to figure out how to make it a little bit nicer than just pavement and so forth. Select Board told us to put the brakes on and hold for the MVP grant if we can, so we did. We got the MVP grant, now we gotta take the money I got, kind of as the emergency fix, put it with the MVP grant, and now we'll be able to make it a beautiful kind of educational front entrance, but we still have to work on how we're gonna make just asphalt better looking than just asphalt.
Right, right.
And so maybe the engineers can help us with that, and maybe we do stamping close to the building, and it just turns asphalt out. But you know, the new plantings and rain gardens will be, will be nice there.
So with the, first off, congratulations on getting that grant.
I mean, Chris Curtis did all right on it, so. And if you guys, it's your.
But anyway, glad we have the grant.
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty-two K is what the grant, it's what the grant is, right, that's how much you.
That is with, that is the total project cost with the grant. There's still.
Eighty-five thousand plus, it's not plus one hundred and fifty-two that we have, or is it?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the.
That eighty-five thousand's not in that number.
Right.
It's not part of the grant number.
Correct, correct.
So it's an addition.
Right.
But you can't use the grant money to do the asphalt work.
Right.
Whatever goes out there, because that's not part of this, so the grant is strictly for.
Yep.
Gotcha, okay, now that makes.
Yep.
And the grant is actually, yeah, it includes our matching portion.
So that's where.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so the asphalt still needs to be done, and it can be done with eighty-five thousand? And, and that's why you're saying, oh, can we stamp it, or can we, it's asphalt, whatever, it's only eighty-five.
Right, the one fifty-two. Yep.
But the rain gardens, drainage, all that stuff gets.
I'm sending you both, every, we've seen the full committee, both documents on that. I wasn't going into that detail tonight, but I probably should have brought things.
Some more to come.
Yep.
And the plan for execution or preparation this next summer?
These plans don't let me come back to what you said, are they for execution? Yes, you'll see that they are the engineered plans about how the drainage works and that kind of thing. What we have to get is, the plans just show the hard surface. They don't go into how the hard surface has been, you know, we have to come back within the budget doing that. It's a small tweak for the engineers in that part of the plan. So then we'll get that tweaked, the engineers will come up with the final plan, so I'll give you the whole process. So we'll get that tweaked, the engineers will come up with the final plan, I'll come back to you folks with the final plan to approve. There may be add-on options, which means if it comes in lower than the price, we could add, and you know, if we want to add, you know, more stamping would probably be where we're at, you know, there may be different, you know, different price points or add-on options. And then you will agree to a bottom-line number. We then will work with Furcog to put it out to bid, and our, our window is, we want bids to go out, is in probably by February, because we want to be on the asphalt companies, that's when they do all their bidding, so that we can get it done during the new job. Probably even better the month of August, but you have to do a bigger window, because we're gonna probably have summer school here. But Tina's not here, we're gonna have to explain to everybody, so you have to come in and sign it, because we'll block off that front, or yeah, we'll have to see what we have to do. Maybe we have summer school somewhere else. I don't know, they'll be planning on that, depending on how the contracts, but you have, if you do a tight window, the price goes up. Rain, you have those kind of things, and they have other projects that are affected, not just your project affected by rain, but if there's six months leading into you has been washed out, all the projects get backed up, and then they, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Continue on for you and your superintendent's report, the super tendency agreement update.
So that's been tabled, because at our last meeting, we had more questions. I have met with the attorney since then, but I haven't finalized getting that, I met with him on Tuesday, not met with him virtually, to go through, again, we got caught up in the three-fifths or one, or four-fifths in what's best, and can we do, I actually can share what we have learned, but can you do three-fifths but also a majority vote of all members? That's what I went to ask the attorney, and the answer is, he does not recommend that, because you're doing two types of voting. So we have to then come back and make a decision whether it's three-fifths or four-fifths. You know, for, this is all renewal or dismissal or dispo of the superintendent, like the sectionary kind of call. Anything to the other questions that were in there? But I have it all, I have to put it into the thing and send out to the meeting, and then we have to have another quick meeting about what we want to do on this one. Are you were there, is there anything else?
Yeah, I just, I, my, my perspective is it was, it's a very thoughtful discussion, and it wasn't overthinking. That you took it back, and we'll have a third meeting, and just like, get it done, bring it up.
We talked a lot about that, there's also a lot of like, learning about how come we're here where we're at and that kind of, and we get, we get, we get down some rabbit holes and that kind of stuff too, but it's also like, it's gotta work when people are not happy with one another. That's, you know, it's easy when everybody's agreeing, you don't need the agreement, you need it when there's tensions, so you gotta predict, like, what if a committee doesn't show up in protest, you know what I mean? Like, you know, those kind of things, like, like we've seen in neighboring towns, where they're just our members, or, you know, that kind of stuff. So we're trying to think through some of those things, so that's.
When I think it also, there's more to come, like this is my understanding, this is a sliver of, since we're not technically regionalized officially, right? So like, we're.
Not at all regionalized, yes.
Hodging some things together, but like, there's more.
Right, to a union agreement, there would be more. Right, to a union agreement, there would be more of that. And so to the union agreement, and what we, this group has decided is that we are just going to worry about the superintendent. Get that passed and then we'll do addendums to this agree, this portion, if we want to talk about how negotiations works. Or how, you know, that was kind of brought up as well, like, you know, how do you, as a negotiation team work within, you know, all these kinds of things that can be done. Um, but we wanted, I really, from my perspective, see you have to have this in place because we saw a glimpse of it at the last change of the superintendent. That if you don't have a clear voting and you have disagreement, you don't know how to solve it.
Yeah.
And I'm saying it over and over, if you have disagreement with disciplining me, you can't make a decision, you know. Uh, uh, you see, you see it in neighboring districts, I'm going to be sitting with council and they're going to tear apart the fact that you don't have an agreement. Do you know what I mean, that kind of thing? And so that's why we're trying to put this together. I'm just being blunt about it.
Well, that's why I think it's trying to get it. Imperfectly right, totally, you know, the best that we can. I appreciate the work that we've put into it. We, we need something in place, we need that. I've been very risky to not have an agreement in place until so long. Get it as right as you can and then get it placed. And I think that the straightforward with what needs to happen is important to get people on, you know, the basement to figure it out.
Yep.
And for, for people to want to come work here in our district or the day when Darius decides that he's all done, it's like, it's happened, but you know. It is really helpful if that were to do ever. Yeah.
At least it's one of your chef's, yeah, right?
All right, so anyways, we're tabling that. Um, I put it on the agenda because it's just posted. You're putting the posting at the same week we're meeting to talk about it, so I didn't know how to get it done.
Alright, thank you. Oh, no, 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 I was reading, I was telling you again. Very much. Next up on the agenda is the original.
So, um, let's see, I was telling the story last year and I'm just picking back up my fall season. And we are implementing new curriculum in the LA of cross academic elementary schools. And I'll tell you about that. And then we are doing a soft launch of my application also. Um, for the next year, they are officially open the curriculum. We know really good since the teachers and we'd like them to, um, wade into it gradually this year. Um, so for English Language Arts, we, uh, the committee worked last year, we researched the resident schools. They're looking at the ratings of different programs and, um, selected the following. We have Devos H, our university school home. And that's, um, a free one online three times a year, which is like a medical for your checkups, just to make sure that everything is, um, as we thought. And that we, nothing changed without the system by the teacher notice. Um, for our K through two students, um, we're using the program for new flights and acronym U, acronym U L I. Of the University of Florida Literacy Institute. And for our foundational skills, other entry approach. That's a half an hour event. And it's multi-century, it's torn physical response, it's using whiteboards, using magnetic letters, singing songs and, and. And it teaches explicitly and systematically, uh, sound letter course topics and. And phonetic awareness and segmenting and blending. And it comes with decodable texts, so students can practice reading texts that are just the letters and sounds that they were so far. And have that success in the text, it's getting increasingly complex to the letters and sounds they know. So after the half hour of group instruction, uh, that I just described, there's a power of differentiated instruction. And during that time, um, it introduces to the students, um, about them missing any children or code burning. And, um, teachers can form groups to work with kids and to share a text, to do, to listen to fluency. Students can read and do activities on their own. There's games like roll and lead, um, there's different kinds of games where students can practice what they can learn. And we've bought more decodable texts for all of these goals, so that students have more texts that they can read. They're coded so that if you only know seven sounds, uh, the teacher can find books more than one book, more than one page that have these sounds being asked. And we have, um, the, the literacy module is, um, expeditionary learning language arts or DL language arts. This is, um, uh, responsive curriculum. So whereas UPI is fairly direct and explicit, which is what the research says, learning tribute should be. This is, um, clear and explicit, but also there's room for teachers to bring their gifts to the classroom and their background knowledge. And to also hear what the students are interested in and create projects in response. The texts are, um, diverse, uh, highly rated for complexity at grade level. The curriculum is accessible, that is one of our priorities, was having grade level text. But part of the teaching, um, methodology includes read alouds and rereading. And so students are building all of them, seeing vocabulary and background knowledge, um, with grade level texts. Even if their decoding level isn't at grade level, they're not being held back, um, reading at grade level texts and building to the other schools. And the writing projects are exciting, um, let's see. So I was just helping a kindergarten teacher this morning, the, the final project for the first unit, which is about toys and play. We're researching, first they write and draw and label diagrams of their own favorite toy. But then they research classmates' favorite toy and why they like it and how they play with it. And they get a description from their classmates so that they can draw it because the description is so detailed. And let's have them sample it and teachers can help them, they present to an audience. You know, this is in the school building, this is my classmate's favorite toy and why and what's news. So there's a lot of individual personality here. And in the sixth grade, at the other end, they're reading the lightning piece and they're learning a lot about big mythology. And this is entirely, they discover this text. Part of the research is that the more background knowledge you build into learning, um, into literacy, the, um. The better able kids are to read because when you have background and context, you know, um, you're, you're able to hang your hands. So if you're reading something that's a little hard, but you kind of know what it's about, it's easier to make sense of it. Just why I can't read like a medical textbook is because I could sound out the words, but I wouldn't have the context. So they're learning about, um, big mythology and the final project is, um. Uh, writing a chapter into the lightning piece, like there's in Jackson, um, where you are, because there's a superpower that you look based on. Um, I think a difficulty that you have because the main character has ADHD. And so his superpower is related to the positive side of having ADHD. So you think about yourself and you write a super girl, you thought you could influence yourself into destroying using some of that's the positive side of the thing that's hard for you. It's a pretty great program and that's K through six. Um, and everybody's had, the teachers have had days of training in kindergarten, just at the beginning. And there's obviously a lot to lift this year, but there's teachers that have all been trained in administrative devils. Teachers teaching UPI have been trained in UPI and teachers teaching the, the all classroom teachers have been kind of found, one foundational goal on training in the new program. So they're going to support it with continual training. There's a lot of new stuff going on right now. I don't think it'll ever be this hard again for the next nine years or whatever. All of the teachers do their major athletes for, that they've taken on, like, layers and layers of the. Um, if you have questions about the LA before I came in.
Just curious about their governments do, with all of the extra learning, the learning curve or folks getting into it and said, like, teachers, I mean.
Yeah, I'm hearing a variety of things and I can't really see the big picture yet because, um, some of the orders are in those stuff. And we're just like fixing one thing at a time, so it's kind of hard to see the big picture. I hear that, uh, teachers and the kids love the books, and the book, that this election affects, that this program has been a big help. I hear that it is cumbersome to plan a lesson, there's just so much support material for teachers. That it's hard to find the distilled, like, this is what I need to teach tomorrow. There's just all these rich connections and suggestions of support and extensions and just, I think it's a long trade. Um, but I'm having grade level meetings in October, which is when all of the, um, first grade teachers in the district come together for three hours. And we need about a film, same with second grades and the third grade. And I'm sure that in six weeks I'll have a clearer picture. And so excited that when we need the bill at the meetings, everyone can teach them the same thing so that teachers can really collaborate and help each other. Um, previously, two schools were doing different things. And so coming together for those meetings, you could tell stories, but you couldn't really pull themselves together with the same insights. And this is going to be very much, so we'll enjoy that. Um, now, the math selection committee, um, elected, uh, we, we're using something called the, well, actually, this was my decision. The universal screen for number science. Also, this is our second year of using it. Last year we piloted it for kindergarten through the third grade and it was a success, so we're going to get to K through six. Just like the rules, it's a quick interview, um, five minutes, six minutes. And you quickly find out, um, if anyone's doing any help accessing grade level content. And so you can adjust your teaching right from the beginning of the school year, whatever kind of insight. And then again, in January, you get the end of the year. And, um, the K, five curriculum is bridges. Um, this curriculum has three parts to it. One part is, I mean, called a number planner meeting. And that's the part that a significant number of teachers have opted to try this year, even though we knew that it was kind of a lot to try. Two new programs in a year. This is a math meeting with possible workouts and their flowery routines or, um, pattern routines. And so, uh, it goes community, it's accessible to everyone, but it gets deeper and deeper and it's viral so that it hits all of the math standards over the course of the year. So I think eighty three percent of the teachers in the district are trying that this year. Um, and then there's four pieces of the math. Most people are waiting till next year to take that on. Um, there are some teachers in every school who are using it this year because they're new to the district and they didn't do something in them. Um, that program doesn't go into sixth grade, sixth grade is using illustrative math, which is going to be a smooth transition. It's approach to learning math is similar and problem-based and supportive of math identities. Um, built in PD for teachers in those programs, so that it's about teaching all owners to see themselves as mathematicians and to value multiple ways of creating their math and accessing problems. That's built into the nature of the programs. Happy to provide that update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The teachers are really, um, you know, amazing to be, I'm going to say.
Thank you, teachers.
Thank you, teachers. And everyone.
It's really exciting to hear so much of it. It's, um, it's just so different from the math that I grew up with, you know, that word, even the English, just how, how responsive it is to. The variety, you know, the understanding of variety of ways people, you know, every brain is different and stuff like that, so that's.
Yep. I, I appreciate the little minutes that you share.
Oh, yeah.
You know, clearly you know so much about this. And so I don't understand some of the words, but when you, when you share the story, like, you have kindergarten, you're sitting up talking about. Their friend, their toy.
Yeah.
So I, that's very helpful as an outsider to understand what all that means about them.
I should have the decoding, I figured out, you know, what you go by the.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's that idea that you can, I mean, I totally could think of that even like when you're learning a language or. And that's essentially what it is for kids is that they're learning, well, they're native, you know, or they're learning the language at school. And not really, um, you know, it's like, oh, I understand, you know, it's like a good unfortunate R S T N felony. And those are the only letters you can use to spell any things that they learned how to work with them before they get to Q. Anyway.
Well, I will say that parents actually had a lot to do with rather research on how students under the need had resurfaced because during the pandemic. Parents were teaching their kids at home and realizing that their kids couldn't read, they were predicting texts. So the, the, uh, the trend for twenty years was I can swim, I can fly, I can eat. And they weren't actually sounding out the words, they got the rhythm and they could see the picture. And it was parents who started starting questioning, uh, five years ago, we, this isn't actually singing reading, this seems like memorizing. And then the research resurfaced, but it's really old research that it got beaten. And I'm happy to be responded.
I've got to scoot out, going from kids to senior meeting, so. Getting all age groups tonight, so. Yeah, good to see you again. Do you want to be in between each other?
Eight.
Twenty eight. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Let's look, we have the resolution to protect the rural aid for schools. So, um, this is a resolution that was proposed by a group that's working on increasing rural aid to schools, affecting many districts. Um, I don't know if what you saw, Jessica did send out one update, your information. I did print that out, see if we didn't see it or can't.
Oh, you sent it out.
Yeah. A little bit here. Yeah. It's, it's the same as the initial one.
Oh, I don't know, I meant, oh, thank you. I thought, I was thinking way, I think it's something, I'd be. So trying to be everything, but thank you. It's nice to meet you.
And you have done a little look at us, have you not, huh?
I think I just, and this may be information that we are, we know about, but just in the interest of anyone who might be watching or might sort of be curious about this. So, um, so this resolution, this is to support, um, rural schools, bill, which our legislative delegation has been working really hard on. Um, and just where it came from, in two thousand nineteen, the, um, Student Opportunity Act was passed to address certain educational inequities and funding. And with that bill in two thousand nineteen, there was some acknowledgement that like, okay, like, we're not quite sure rural schools is like its own thing. And we need to establish a commission to study what exactly is going on with rural schools. And we will, this is the act that we will fund that commission to do a study. So the rural schools commission did the study. And, um, some of the things that they found, which are things that we are sort of seeing in real time and Darius has talked about sort of extensively. It's more expensive, which is generally to operate a rural school, especially when there's declining enrollment, like you have these buildings. And there's just a unique set of things that we're facing that other communities who are rural doesn't necessarily see. One of the things that they found was that it's on average almost twenty-three percent more expensive for rural schools to operate their budgets. And part of that, and Darius, if you feel like chiming in, is around personnel costs, the sort of collective bargaining around benefits. We don't have the numbers that some other bigger districts have. Um, and we also have a smaller tax base, um, to pay for these things. So it's more expensive, we have a smaller tax base when defining enrollment. Um, and so what the rural schools commission sort of put out was, um, this is inequity and we need to address it. So we know that, but there's a lot of sort of organizing that needs to happen around, um, getting the rural schools bill passed to be top funded rural schools. Keep them as a center of these. And that kid want to stay in our district something and, um, come to school here in their communities. So this resolution is to support a bill that hasn't necessarily been passed, but it sort of, it shows our support. And I do believe that two other state committees, I'm not sure if you'll have that, a resolution at recent times. Um, so the work doesn't stop here, but I think it's a, it's a, it could be a really nice, and for us, the, kind of like show where we sit.
Oh, with this, um, I mean, I, it, it seems to make sense to pass a resolution here at the schools before the bill goes up or being considered or, or. How do you think, cause then show the support for it, but, um, what is the timeline on? Do you know if, um, if the timeline is on that bill, uh, three, five, six, seven? Is that going up for a vote or?
I think it's been, it's been waiting. I think it's been in the wings for a while. Um, so I, I, I think until there's enough buzz to show enough support, which can take three to five years for these things to happen. We need to sort of put a pressure on, and I know part of that might be engaging other rural school districts, which there is an effort to do that. I think there was, um, it sent out some information if individual members felt inclined to sign, um, as a committee member onto a group letter, which. There's about three hundred people in collective rural school, um, committees who couldn't, can't sign onto this letter. And so far, there's about hundred and thirty. um, committees who couldn't, can't sign onto this letter. And so far, there's about hundred and thirty who have signed, um, across the state. So I think there's, there's still some work to do between individually signing a letter, this continuing to engage our legislative delegation who have been wonderful on this. But that's, I think that's helpful information for us, but also if someone's just like randomly like, what's a rural school bill and why? Um, I didn't know about any of this until this last year of hearing Darius talk at length about the channel justice. And which will continue to show us also can help me assemble. This is, yeah. Also, rural schools M A dot board is a great resource to find all of that information, to get up to date, um, whether that's us or anyone at home interested in it.
Um, so I'm jumping ahead, um, into super tense report. Darius has the increase in rural aid for this year. So is this, um, just another question? And how does that funding relate to what we're asking for the rural schools bill? Is it?
So, oh, yeah, so we, I'll jump in. So the rural schools, you know, they did a, uh, the commission together to come up with the rural schools. This bill that you're talking about, I don't think it's going forward as a bold bill right now. I don't think it's gonna have the power to. And they're starting to break it apart. But this past year, they said that, you know, rural schools need about sixty million dollars worth of, um, annual, um, increase. And this year they gave fifteen million. So it was a huge increase, it was seven and a half million increase than what they gave last year to those rural schools. Right now, they're talking about passing, um, another, uh, bill is starting to form up and you'll probably start getting information from M A C on it. That when SOA came out, um, Student Opportunity Act, it is your chapter seventy funding. So it, so they have this act, but it's still, it wasn't like this new money. I mean, it was more money, but it wasn't a new line. It was, they're funding it through how they do chapter seventy. And that's the money that we get for our base, um, you know, our base budget account from the state is chapter seventy. So schools like ours and like the major, it's not the majority, but it maybe the majority of Massachusetts schools, um, are held this thing called hold permits, okay? Which means, and if you look at the data, um, this, the, the sheet that I sent out from, um, my super intense report, I tried to do that on page two. Talk about rural schools funding, but I also talk about chapter seventy. You can see that Deerfield got sixteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars for increased from the state through chapter seventy. So our budget went up. We did a three point two six percent of our budget, which is approximately.
My brain is too tired for.
Sorry, she didn't do the exact number, but it's, our budget went up. I'm gonna guess our, I'm gonna guess our budget went up close to a hundred thousand dollars actually, right? And so it's gonna probably be a
One hundred and sixty-six thousand.
So our budget went up a hundred and sixty-six thousand and the state gave us
Fifteen.
Sixteen.
That's ten percent.
So when you, when chapter seventy used to pay close to half, then it started dripping to a third. How long in this funding model until we can no longer, with the tax base that we have, is the only way to do our school? So rural aid is a part of the bigger solution, but some folks don't qualify for rural aid. We're also an old haramisir. So they're trying to use other ways and to fill up the gap. So the state is, it's politics, right? So it's different groups are asking for the money in different ways and they're spreading out the money in different ways. But in the end, you know, um, we're still being underfunded. So, um, we did get rural aid of dear five thousand, five thousand. So now we can say, um, you know, that we got a whole total of a hundred and when I'm thinking, you can take Charlie's spot. She's clearly tired. Okay, so, so that's a lot, that's a lot better. It's a different funding source, though. They didn't, they chose not to take really to make it part of chapter seventy. They love to keep it separate. So if you go to the third page of my super tense report, I say, we also, the last quarterly earnings in Massachusetts, the tax collection is down. So next year, that's a free indicator that we may be down this, I mean, Massachusetts has a lot of money saved, but they're gonna be slow to how they dish it out, which means like, how much rural aid are we gonna get next year? And so one of the questions that we're gonna have this, this budget season is, what do you want to gain? And it's very similar with some, with Frontier does for transportation. So the state for transportation of a regional school, every year picks a percentage in which they're going to reimburse you at. The law originally said that they were gonna reimburse you at a hundred percent. And then since then, they've kind of gone up and down on that. And so every year we pick a percentage number, usually conservative, because if you're wrong, you're paying, you're either cutting your budget or you're pulling from whatever reserves you have just to do your operation budget before the school year begins. Very dangerous stuff. So we're gonna have to decide a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, um, for Deerfield in the sense that it is, again, it's probably, we went three percent and a hundred and sixty. So it's probably a percent and a half of our, a percent and a half of our budget. It's about two percent of our budget. Um, so it is a significant amount, but we also, we will fold it into the budget the next year where you get some. And so this is a conversation I have at Frontier and lately this week as well, um, I've been Conway in an hour. But the, the other problem is a lot of schools around us used S R money. And you're gonna see budget season, it's gonna be horrific this year. Especially I know some of our neighboring districts who are, they're gonna have to reduce staffing because they put things on budgets that, on one-time mechanics, like S R money. Like rural aid, unless they guarantee, this is what I've said, I know you guys have a broken record here, but I want you to save to other people in your elevator speech. Unless the state promises they're gonna give us a certain percentage of it every year, we're gonna have trouble offsetting our budget without taking risks. And I think this year we're gonna probably take some risk. I, you know, we'll have to see, we'll read the, what's coming out of Beacon Hill at the time and, you know, those kind of things. But if you, you know, say we put fifty thousand dollars of rural aid to knock off our budget to help the tax base, which we wanna do. And then they come back and they only give us thirty thousand, you're gonna find twenty thousand from somewhere else where you're making reductions. So it's, thank you, we're gonna use it. And what we do is that's where we start using with school choice. We'll take stuff off of school choice. We use rural aid. We'll put that stuff back in school choice. And that's why our school choice is a little bit healthier than it has been some years, because we've been using this extra money like S R. And like rural aid, and we've been saving choice because they've left the future so unpredictable that we can't properly budget in the way they're funding us. And so, I'm sorry, I said a lot there, but it's, it's, you'll wrap me, the more you talk about it, the more you wrap your head around why it's kind of good.
Well, I think this is, this very much in process bill, uh, is trying to address a step to make it consistent. And also, one of the things that I think is very relevant to our district is providing money to do regionalization, which I don't know all the ins and outs of that, but there's a reason probably why we're not officially regionalized. Those would cost money. There's sort of different pay grades and different buildings. So there is a mechanism, at least as of now, to support smaller districts to regionalize and eventually save money, even though it sort of costs money to get everyone up to the same level at first. Um, so there's more, there's more sort of in there that could be beneficial to our district. And they have been able to integrate those things.
And there's other funding issue in there. Funding streams within that report as well, talking about transportation and specialized transportation, the amount of money you spend on specialized transportation. With your hair fall, um, you know, that kind of thing. And if we could work together, you know, more regionally to do that, and create, you know, um, you know, special education programs that are in our region instead of, you know, we're, we're, you know, Deerfield is driving people to long metal. For, for our place to, it's, it's hundreds of dollars a day in transportation. So, we're, we're too soon. So it's very Okay. That's reasonable.
Just the, the one thing I wanted to say is thank you for being proactive and thinking ahead and not, you know, and, and not getting us into that hole of, yes, thank you. Shelley, um, you know, make sure we're not, we're not, um, promising things we can't mention.
Check the balance. Unfortunate that we could have made it.
Thank you for that. I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the, the writing signing this resolution.
And I have a motion to approve the, um, the Deerfield Resolution in support of the rural school bill. I, I motion to approve the resolution.
We just say second, you name it.
Yeah, I think I'll make the motion. For two sub resolutions for the school bill.
Any further?
All favor. All right. Except the elementary playground project hiring engineer.
All right. So, um, I did share this to you digitally. So you have that, those are digital records. This is part of why I wish she was here. I've been in conversations about this. And we will take a little walk in a minute, but I'll, I'll introduce it here. And it is on our agenda that we are gonna take a walk. So we are allowed to leave the running of the camera. Sorry, folks at home. But looking at the screen, we've all been in playgrounds. The, the two playgrounds off, um, the, the K four playground and the pre-K playground are, um, they were redone in, I believe, two thousand sixteen, not the pre-K, but the, uh, K four playground was. And as we will go out and look at it, is no longer really ADA accessible. And it's unfortunate it's not because it's not considered an old playground yet. Um, we have problems with not only the surface that was put down, it wasn't drainage was not. It was a volunteer group of parents who did it. So I think we had time, but apparently the drainage had wiped out the underneath problem, underneath the lane. And you will, you'll see the ups and downs as you try to get to it. Tina originally, um, you know, came to me, um, wanting to add more ADA accessible devices out there. We do have several students with, with limitations, um, physically and trying to make the playground open for all and have devices they can use. Um, rather than, right now, we have a swing, but it does require assistance just to access it. Um, and the other device you can kind of use, but she wanted to do some, and we've been doing playgrounds in the district where we've seen these news, which, you know, if you go up to Conway, they have a boat. A full chair can get on, anybody can get on the boat rocks. You, you can, they play to whatever imaginary game they're doing on it and that kind of stuff. Those kind of, which want to start with just one. Then we start talking about that you have to do this surfacing and that kind of thing. So, um, the idea is, and I put a little picture on the second page, but is to remove, it's a shot from the sky. You can see the blue things is the current large structure. Um, and the, um, that light green is the pour and play. Oh, yours is dark. Oh, you know what? I can probably share.
Oh, wait, yes, it's digital.
Yeah, I mean. I can make things happen, I think.
There you go.
Here we are. It's not great, but better. All right. So this is, this blue thing right here is the current large structure. This is, uh, oh, actually here. I was trying to, don't mind me. I was trying to move my mouse up on that screen. This is where you come out to the playground. This right here is the preschool playground, which we also want to do in phase two, to do that one over. Um, coming out here, um, and what you see in the light green here is the pour and play. It's an artificial rubber surface. Looks great from the sky, but we'll go out and look at it so you can get a real idea of what the problem is. The idea is we want to put in multiple, um, new structures that, there are also new structures that we put in recent playgrounds that not just one or two students can use, but, I mean, looking over at Lork, she's been at Conway to see it in action. But they have structures that fifteen kids can play on once at different levels and different games and different kind of things. And so, um, basically do pour and play from here over to the asphalt and put in multiple new structures based on what we can afford. And then keeping the upper side, um, still wood chips under the older, older, but still in very good condition, um, multi thing. This would allow multiple stations there. Right now, also, when you go out and look at it, um, the chips from both playgrounds, it's like, you know, this is a river in between. The, the hard, the pour and play, again, that rubber surface is between two areas of chips. So they cross back and forth and now you can't run it, you can't run a wheelchair down with all those chips. If you keep them on one side, it becomes a little bit more manageable. Ideally, would we do the whole thing? Pour and play? Sure. But we're trying, I'm trying to approach this with a, and we'll, and we'll talk to the engineers about this. But, um, anyway, so that's what we want to do first. In the second project, we want to go to, I'm not going in as much detail, but basically the playground above it, which is the preschool playground. Most of the, um, uh, play structures are gated. Some of them can be re-firmished. They could use some new life to them. Um, they also, um, you know, we have to put wood chips in every year. Like I just said, it costs five thousand dollars a year in wood chips. While it is still cheaper to do the wood chip option, it's not as safe if they get in everything, kids get splinters and stuff and other kind of things. But is to do a pour and play surface in the preschool playground. The other question is, within it, do we reduce the size of the playground? We'll go out and look at it. There's a lot of different ideas. Do you do part of it? Because pour and play is very expensive. You know, it does average. I don't wanna be right, you know, I don't wanna be the wrong number. Um, but I, it, it, you know, it's, you know, it's very expensive per square foot. And so you reduce your square footage and that kind of thing. But so what I'm asking for tonight is to give us approval to, um, contract with engineer. We most likely will go with, um, uh, Berkshire Design, the ones we used for Sunderland and with Conway, their playgrounds are the kind of their specialty. And, um, basically they put together a scope. We, how far you wanna go and then what those budgets are based on that scope. And they can have a lot of add-ons and drop-offs about, so we can start talking about, this is where you're, the square footage you're gonna get with pour and play. These are the average costs of structures you're talking about, that kind of thing. Um, the larger picture on this is how are we going to pay for this? My suggestion is that we look at CPA again. Um, and we go to them. And here is my rationale and, um, we let them know early. Last year, we kind of went a little bit late with, uh, the test courts. And it was miscommunication to myself and the select board about who was handling that. And they were upset with us that we came in late with it. But this is the only playground in town. You know, we were gonna put a park in that kind of fell through. So, you know, I don't know if some of that money is, is back unused. You know, and so when we get the numbers and that kind of thing, looking at CPA funding to offset that, so we don't have to go for a warrant. You know, you come here in the weekend, there's people on that playground all day long. Um, and there are obviously kids on our own, so. That's the idea of where to go to it. We may have to chip in some, but we have to get the numbers first. Then when we get the numbers, we start to build, how we do a budget. But, um, I hinted a thing to Trevor, because I already got into his ear about it, because I was asking about, he was involved with, um, and so are some other people who are on these committees. Were involved with redoing of the, uh, like the parent volunteer portion of this, that in, you know, wanted to kind of, can you start talking about like, what can the town afford? What's the best way for us to approach this? And should we be looking at CPA? And so just trying to get different people talking about it, because it's a project, we don't care, I don't think, how it gets paid for. We want the project to get done. And the town has different, you know, different modes. And so that's, um,
I don't know the size of these playgrounds compared to Conway or Sunderland. Sunderland's was only the early childhood playground.
Correct.
Is that similar to the size here?
Yes. And they did a partial pour and play. It's a bit similar to the size of the K four playground map, but. I don't know, I have to pace it out. It's a bit different. It's probably about this, they're both about the same size, yeah.
I would say Sunderland's a little smaller. Oh, with the one in front of them.
The one in front.
Yeah, the one in front of them, just a little smaller than them.
But in other towns, was there a? Was there an engaging of like CPAC or PTOs or sort of like kids themselves around?
So Conway uh, was primarily funded by the town. So the town had. Some uh, like revolving accounts that they needed to consolidate and spend. So they used some of those funds. But the majority of Conway's playground was paid for uh, with CPA money. And there was a big um, push up there to make it. Uh, ADA compliant because they actually have a staff person who is in a wheelchair and needed to access playground as well, not just students. Um, Sunderland had spent a lot of work to fund this. Their project ended up being. More than they anticipated, but the majority of it was also from CPA funds. And then I believe that they got an ADA grant as well, a smaller grant from ADA. And then there were various things like he uh, was able to secure some community donations of monetary donations as well as. In kind with some local businesses. And then PTO made a donation. There was a early childhood playground donation that families contributed to. So a lot of small pieces helped finish out the project. But both Conway and Sunderland, the majority was CPA.
So the generals, just these are throw against the wall, just we can start just for conversation base, but. Michael sent me the numbers on pre K areas forty eight hundred square feet at fifteen dollars a square feet is seventy two thousand dollars. The large playground is seventy seven hundred square feet. At fifteen dollars a square foot is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and then the swing sets south. That's another area. We weren't sure if we're going to include this. I didn't include it in part of my presentation. It's twenty six hundred square feet. At fifteen for thirty nine thousand dollars. So, you know, it's a hu- that's a hundred and sixty if we did those two groups together. Um, he said, did follow up another email. Conway's project was fifteen dollars a square foot. Um, if we are doing a lot of sub base, it's going to be about twenty dollars a square foot. So he's going to go up by another. Twenty five percent.
I think both Conway and Sunderland spent total around three hundred thousand between the porn place, the equipment. Change orders, signage, benches.
But to not make people listening who. The teaching staff are going to figure out. But if anybody else watches it later on, the largest structure out there is in perfect shape. So we don't need to replace that. And so in, you know, like I said, it's on our agenda to take a walk out there. We probably should do the majority of our business.
But with that said, some of the ADA equipment, like it could cost thirty thousand just for one.
Maybe that's maybe again, this will start looking for grants and that kind of stuff at the same time.
I definitely think it's conversation to have with CPA. It's exactly the kind of thing that they thought. Recreational use for the community.
Trevor went to their meeting on Tuesday, I believe. If you want on this, don't hold me to it. I believe he said he went to the meeting with them. They were talking about. That this might be coming and so on and so forth. So just. Early heads up because we did do an early heads up last year and we have a lot of good.
So you're looking for approval to go ahead, the engineers now. What kind of what?
Probably twenty thousand dollars. Um, it ranged from twenty to thirty. I disagree with Shelley. She said she's always conservative. I think it's near around twenty thousand, but.
It'll be twenty five.
Yeah, I don't think we're looking at any less than twenty thousand. And I do think, you know, while I talk about us being conservative with school choice, I think that this is a good use of school choice money. And given our balance currently, I don't think it's going to hurt us to spend the money. It, this has come up. Every time I ask Tina, end of year funds, what do you want to buy? Oh, I really want this equipment so that our playground is accessible and. It doesn't make sense to piecemeal it. It makes sense to do it right from the get go, not just for that purpose, but for safety reasons. The wood chips get washed away. The kids are on the swings. They kick them out. It's a safety concern as well.
Then on weekends, liability like that is a hasn't worked for those states.
No, I think as long as. Yeah, I mean, after school hours, it's. I mean, they've talked to insurance company about what the actual language is, but you know, we don't lock off. Any of our brands, so to speak. So as long as, I mean, we're probably liable if you remove the slide and it tries to go down it. You know what I mean? Like, you know, that kind of thing. Like, you have to keep it at the. Some standard of safety.
Yeah, I think we can pay the engineer. That's the first step. We can't do anything else.
Also, I understand. Oh, I understand. That is the, that's the whole block. So that is someone who will. Come up with a scope of service, come up with the plans. Take it with us to bid. They, we usually use FERC because it's actually cheaper than when we hit it to bid. This is again, three times, few times, and then see us through the project. Through the, you know, and and Berkshire Design has been a very good job of being on site, the projects and making sure that if there's anything complicated going on, they. Right? And so, well, yes, what I think would, my recommendation to chair is to um, finish our new, our business. And then because we're talking about it as we go out there, you have to keep the meeting open. Folks who are watching can whatever, you know, I'll shut it off. So they're watching nothing. Then we will only come back to adjourn, not doing more business in here. Does that make sense? So finish your, finish the, finish the agenda. And then we're going to take a walk into it. Someone about show the way we're talking about.
The goal vault before the walk.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Do all your business before, unless you guys need to see it before to vote it. I don't think, I think you've all seen it.
Okay, so then I'd be looking for a motion. For the tire and engineer for the elementary playground.
I would also recommend when you do world builds like this that you put. We don't want you to, but it's best practice say not to exceed thirty thousand. You want to put limits on. Kind of training you for, I don't know where, I believe it, but I'm training you for like, you know, same about here. You want to put, if you want, you want to put limits on. When you're bored, you want to put limits on where you are. So so not to exceed a certain amount, almost everything you do. That way you, we have to come back to you. It should some.
Right. So any. Are you, your motion modified? Okay. Uh, so the next item on our agenda is the placeholder for goal setting for the committee.
Only that we need to. We um, we were reading the book with some of us and we need to. There's, we're still in the process of that um, and getting together to discuss it. But so far, it's a very good, very thank you. Suggestion.
The equity audit that's happening. At the end of the month, it's like, I think that's perfect. Regroup around our responsibilities will be.
I will say there is a some of us podcast. If you haven't seen that, um, it's an extension of the book. It's not the book itself, but it talks about different. Extension of it. So if you're a podcast person. Kind of pulls a lot of the same themes, so.
Next up, reports. Chair can report.
So we highlighted most things on it. Um, and we just started talking about the um. The audit meeting on the twenty eighth at six and just really, I'm encouraging people to bring questions. If, uh, so Jim Farrell is one, was one of the auditors that was here. He'll be on site and he's going to meet with the administration earlier in the day, then teachers in the afternoon. Um, and then you folks at night, but really, if he comes presents and there's not questions, I mean. I want to say we invested a lot of money in this, so I want people to bring like, I don't understand why you made this assumption or this connection or these kind of things. Um, I've had some conversations with some members on the side and just really. And if you have like complex questions, if you want to send it to me advance and saying, I'm going to ask you this question, you know, that's also. A nice thing to do to be a presenter because they can, you know, be prepared to that. But it is, if we don't talk about it, we don't bring the document to light before we go to send it to you. So. And it's a big document to be have some, there's funny, you know. I'm working through it because at first I was defensive of the school. But then someone came in like, and so then someone came in like was kind of went after the document. Then I was defensive of the document before I was a defensive of the school. It's like you really do have to kind of work through it and it is about bettering the school. And it's about understanding what the document says so that we can use it. So as you kind of go back through and um, kind of look for things, please can chop things down and bring that because. If we can have it, it's the only thing on the agenda besides reorganization of the thirty eight. Group there. So just, you know. If he just presents, it'll be thirty minutes, we'll get up and leave. So that was the other thing. And then um. You said pretty much for all. Oh, the only other thing is the um. I said the other day as well is there will be some meetings coming up because uh, my contract does expire at the end of this fiscal year. And my contract says that you have to make a decision on me by January, by the end of January. So that requires, one, we don't have this group agreement in place yet. Our hope is to put something in place so that we can use it. So kind of trial run through hopefully in a non stressful point. For my sake, um, but there will probably be joint meetings in. Um, either October, November to decide, A, to negotiate my, to. Say yes to negotiation. Then you got to make a negotiation subgroup. You got to negotiate my contract. Then you, you got to come back together to vote, negotiate. So there's business to be done. In the next few months, and that's why I just don't know for yourself.
I haven't looked at this different. But doesn't it lay out specifies who is on the negotiation play? Okay, so.
It's chairs.
Right.
Oh, no, no, chairs are not on the negotiation. The chairs appoint you know, the initiation person. So negotiation committee is not the. The agreement committee. We'll get through it. Now it's. I just wanted to put on people's, I just want to put people's readers because there's more meetings and I don't want it to be a surprise all of a sudden like, oh, I forgot it was a contract. Yeah. So what I would say is that we will come back to adjourn. We are not going to do that on video because we're not going to keep this open for twenty minutes. But there'll be no, you just make the statement, there'll be no business other than adjournment. We do that when we go to executive session. We're going to come back to adjust to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, so at this point, we are going to uh. Go for a tour of the facilities. And when we return, it will, we know that that's just what we are, returning off video.